For the North Branford Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, at 7:05 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Candelora.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Fawnan.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Councillor Bigleom.
Here.
Councillor Zampiano.
Here.
We have our distinguished state representative Vincent Candelora here tonight to fill us in on the happenings in Hartford and what we can expect in our future.
I lost my jacket from Hartford to here, so it's kind of interesting. But to give you an update, we're still in the early part of the session, and I think the difficult part is always is that the state budget is not aligned with the municipal budget cycle in a good way because we obviously don't know what the towns' final numbers are going to be, probably till close to the end of May. The Appropriations Committee will be reporting out the first week of May their budget, and that'll give us the first indication about where we will likely end up. So we have a little bit of a crystal ball that we have to use, I think the towns have to use in the budget process. The two areas of concern for North Branford, obviously, is number one. I talked about the ECS formula last year that was introduced, Governor Lamont, where it's tied to a true education formula based on student population, income levels, and the like. Governor Lamont is attempting to accelerate the implementation of that ECS formula, so rather than it be a gradual phase in over a decade, he's trying to implement it all in one year, which leads to a significant cut to towns, essentially, North Branford being one of them. I don't think that that proposal is going to fly, but again, that's something we're up against. The other is a recent middle of a proposal to shift teacher retirement to the towns, a portion of that cost. And while it doesn't look too bad on paper in the first year, I think it was like 70 million for North Branford.
Seventy million?
Seven, I mean, sorry, 70,000. I have to translate, sorry. It accelerates quickly, and it gets up into the 250 million in the second year. I think the biggest issue, aside from the cost shift, is that if, we need a bigger dialogue if we're going to be shifting teacher retirement to towns, and that being, the towns need to have a say then in what we're paying out as benefits. So I think that needs a broader conversation. I don't see that proposal going forward. So, you know, I would say that right now it's sort of a wait-and-see. I don't anticipate us seeing our town getting cut this year, but, you know, that's sort of my prediction. Two areas that we have to worry about also for the town is the minimum wage increase, which will impact our communities, obviously, summer employment. The second piece is the family medical leave, how that gets implemented, if that ends up applying to municipalities. There is a version right now that does apply to municipalities, so that's something that we're keeping an eye on. The third piece, I think, that towns should keep an eye on is, in the governor's proposal, he wants to expand the sales tax to sports and recreation and camps. So aside from, obviously, that hits my business, it does hit towns. Just because you're nonprofit, you're non-taxable, doesn't mean you'd be required to collect a sales tax for the community, for the state. So any programs that are run through the town, like our camps, will be subject to a 6.35% sales tax, and that would go for little leagues and other sports organizations. But I was a little surprised to hear, and I had requested that information on Friday, whether or not it would apply to municipalities, and it seems as if that it would. I think it's going to get a lot of pushback, and what may end up happening is, I mean, all those expansions, the sales tax, may go away in the budget process, is my guess. The push seems to be a looking at an income tax increase or increasing the sales tax. And the last issue is, I am dealing with legislation for the reimbursement for our body-worn cameras. It's about an $18,000 reimbursement that we are entitled to, but of course, the governor's office has interpreted the statutory language to deny that money to our town. So Senator Cohen and myself co-introduced legislation that makes it clear that North Branford's entitled to that reimbursement. It shouldn't have to go to legislation, we're still trying to work it out to allow for the reimbursement without a legislative change, but that bill's in there. If we need to pass that into law, we're going to. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Where do you see the regionalization going? You see it going anywhere this year?
I think it'll be a task force, if anything. There's a lot of flaws with the regionalization, because it's based on population, it needs much broader review. So I think what you'll see is probably a task force being created to see what towns might be amenable or, you know, better to regionalize. We have much smaller districts than North Branford out there that it might be appropriate for them to begin regionalization. You know, Ansonia and Derby have discussed it. There's some natural fits. For our town, I don't see a real good fit, but that conversation will be out there. I think generally, we should look toward trying to consolidate services as we're seeing the student population shrink. So from a budgetary perspective, it's always a good idea, especially to show that to the state, because one of the things I argue about is, it's not just about regionalizing with other towns, but you can vertically integrate some services within a town. You know, Madison has combined their, some of their central office services with the town to save money, and so going toward that direction. My concern is that we're going to begin to see towns getting penalized if they don't provide some sort of regionalization. So, you know, I just think we need to continue toward that, but I don't see those bills moving forward in the next two years.
Well, it appears like there's a lot of pushback from what I've been reading and seeing on TV.
Yeah, because I think it was, it started in the wrong place. We shouldn't have based it on the probate districts as a point of regionalization, because those districts were regionalized on a whole different analysis. And if you look at that map, you know, some of those towns, the kids would be on buses for an hour and a half to get to a school. So it needs to be done from an educational perspective, not a population perspective.
Can I just clarify that the idea of the towns paying the pension, that's just for current teachers, correct? It wouldn't be for retirees?
Yeah, I believe that the TRS shift would be the cur, well, I believe it's the current payment into the pension. I'll have to look at that number, but I think it's the annualized payment that's paid. So I think it's for...
Current, teachers who are currently paying.
Current, yeah, currently paying, and it may include retired, too. I don't think so, but I haven't looked at it that closely.
So when the governor presented his budget in February, and then CCM came out with, you know, kind of a town-by-town reduction or increase based on things that he had talked about, and North Branford roughly had about a 500,000 decrease.
In the first year.
In the first year. Is, for budgetary purposes for us, is that a good number to stick with, to anticipate, or...
You know, I would cut that in half, at the least, and as we go forward, I think we're going to need to do what we did the last two years, is keep a dialogue going over the next few weeks to see how things are baking out. But quite frankly, if tax increases are imposed at the levels that are being, you know, proposed, I can't see any towns getting cut based on this budgetary framework, because, you know, we're looking at $4 billion of tax increases for, on a 20, well, it's $2 billion in one year on a $20 billion budget. If those go through, there's got to be a way to skin the cat without cutting towns, because it's just going to be another tax increase.
So what about, in one of his, I read somewhere in one of the proposals out there that he would, he was going to look at the construction spending for education, and that you would be penalized if you were, and it was almost a quote, and you wonder where he, what town he picked it from, a small district with high-paid administrators. So how do we, how do we look at doing something with the high school? And so when would we know if there's the 50% funding, or 40% funding, or whatever there is for a school building project?
So, school construction has naturally declined with the state of Connecticut over the years. As the populations decline, districts are closing schools, they're not opening them. So school construction's gone down. What's happened is, two years ago, we put together a commission to provide savings for school construction, and what is being proposed is to have standard drawings that school, that a district could choose from if they're building a school. So pick from A, B, C, or D if you're going to do construction, and save money that way on the architectural and that type of, that would create that type of cost savings. So that report just came out, and I think that's the direction it's moving in. The current levels of reimbursement are at the same levels they've been for all the districts. Because it's borrowing, I don't see that area changing in terms of the levels of reimbursement. So if the town went forward on renovating or new construction, I don't think that has any negative impact on our community. I really don't believe, looking at the maps, that we will be seeing regionalization in the next five, five years. I mean, we may see it 10 years from now, but I just don't see an appetite for forced regionalization. I think the states are going to try to, the state will try to assist and look at towns who want to regionalize, but I just don't think there'll ever be an appetite to force schools to regionalize.
So regionalize your buying, and regionalize your buying within the towns and school systems, but personnel, but not to worry too much about statewide regionalization?
Yeah, I mean, the brick and mortar, I wouldn't worry about as much. I think what you could see over the years is regionalizing, you know, central offices. You could see a proposal for one superintendent, you know, in a county or in an area, and going that back-office route first is what I think we would see happen. You know, possibly sharing curriculum over districts, whether it be through, you know, using technology and using the internet and having those type of shared classrooms. You may see that direction. I just don't see, you know, brick and mortar, closing schools and regionalizing with communities when the numbers are still sufficient.
Any other questions?
Just a quick, I read, too, they just did a release the state study on schools, the population, and I believe it was like half a million or so students, and then educate, certified, I think it was educators, was like 50, close 53,000 roughly. When you do the math, that's like 1 to 10, or 10 to 1, which I think speaks volumes.
Well, it could be. The ratios are anywhere from, the average, I think, is like 1 to 12 for most districts. You know, the challenge is that the courses that are offered, there are AP courses that every district wants to offer, and that's where there might be opportunities to share services. If there's districts that don't offer an AP science course, like an AP physics that students want to take, that might be an opportunity to share those kind of services. And that's where, and that's where I think the conversation should go, to find savings, instead of, you know, let's throw towns together and try to save money. Because the other half, I represent Durham, too, and I hear the stories about regionalized districts. We also need to fix those laws, because it's not necessarily efficient when you combine with another town. There could be just as many, if not more, costs, and that's the other half of the equation, and that's an assumption that we can't necessarily make.
How much of the revenue is based on marijuana?
The budget has no marijuana revenue in it. We have a public hearing for that on Friday. I am an opponent of that law. Right now, the way it stands, it's going to be controversial. I mean, right now, they want to give preference to people convicted of drug crimes to be the licensed zorists to distribute the marijuana. So I think we're just going in the wrong direction on that law.
What did you say? They want to...
Give preference to people who have been convicted of drug dealing, to give them the permits so they could sell the marijuana.
It's like giving liquor store licenses to convicted drug drivers.
Right. That's the current proposal in the bill. It's a crazy session this year, to say the least.
That's experience. Proven. You couldn't make it up.
No.
Most of them already have their own customers. They already have a customer list.
And a root. But just lastly, we had a presentation at East Shore Health, and listening to that and just kind of digesting it now, like, that's going to be a huge hurdle, I think, for a lot of restaurants and self-shops, to go to 700, I think it was like 700 new.
Well, they're going from a 20-page guideline to a 700-page guideline.
So, yeah, what happened is, there were particular foods in Connecticut that couldn't be prepared, I'm forgetting the name of it, but it's, I think it's a French dish, and so they adopted the federal code. Restaurants wanted it in order to be able to do this. Overall, the code isn't too bad. I will say the way the state is implementing it is, because they're requiring duplicate license now, you have to license yourself with the state and East Shore District Health, which we're trying to do away with that, because there shouldn't be dual licenses. But all in all, it's a pretty good implementation, I think. It's a good program for the towns. The budget does protect our regional health districts, so East Shore Health will be receiving their funding, I think, at the same levels. They are looking to cut the districts that have not regionalized their services, and I think that's a whole broader conversation that I think the state needs to look at, because, you know, East Shore Health ends up becoming an arm of the state Department of Public Health, essentially. They provide a lot more services than if you were a single health district like Guilford. And so I think the state is incentivizing the regionalization, because it's a way to take stuff off of their back. But if we're going to do that, obviously, we have to fund it at a level that makes sense for towns, so it's cost-effective. But, you know, because we're in a regional district, we aren't financially impacted the way the single towns may be.
So it's not an unfunded mandate, or it is?
It was, it was a change in the regulations to adopt the federal food code. We were operating under the state food code, so I don't think it's going to be that onerous for, I don't think most restaurants and food establishments aren't even going to really notice the difference.
So you did mention, at least I thought you did, that it may not be a bad idea for towns themselves to try to use the resources we have, both Board of Ed and town resources, to combine where we can, where appropriate and where we can, and that may help the way the state views us in the sense to...
Well, I, yeah, I mean...
...push regionalization? Is it, I thought that's kind of where you were...
Yeah, I think the state, well, it's always good anecdotally to be able to go to Hartford and to point to success stories, and so that's what we try to do. One of those that I see that we point to is, you know, where we're providing savings already. I don't think the state really is going to hone in on a town-by-town basis to see what they necessarily do, but I think to the extent that we can find savings within the town, obviously, and I know we do, I've sat over there in years past, that we do find as much efficiency as we can in the budget process. One suggestion I would have is taking a look at what services could you share on the Board of Education side, trying to vertically integrate, because I don't see, you know, district-wide regionalization occurring. Just demographically for our community, there wouldn't be a lot of options for North Branford to regionalize with. I mean, maybe Branford would be the only option, because I just think the way our road system is, kids won't be on buses for too long. But when you start peeling it back, you're looking at where elementary schools are located, because you don't want the younger kids on buses. It is such a complicated issue that I just don't see it being solved, really, in the next five years, at a minimum. So what I would suggest we continue to do is keep looking for efficiencies, because, you know, the state budget isn't really turning around, and, you know, you try to stay positive, but some of the dialogue is coming up. You know, we never got out of the first recession, and there's always fear of the next recession So I just think that looking, that's one avenue, I think there's an opportunity there. You know, we do have a retirement in the Finance Department on the education side, it's a good time to have a conversation. It's how we regionalized with the animal control. When I served on the council, our animal control officer retired, we went to Branford and joined with them, and it was an easier transition because of that. So that's what I just put out there.
I was just thinking, a child from Skylark Drive in Norfolk going to Branford, it's got to be a 45-minute ride.
Right.
Without picking up other students, you know, so if they pick up other students on the way, it's going to be an hour and a half ride.
And even, you know, Guilford, Guilford has that same problem. Guilford geographically is the size of Stanford, they have the same number of roads, and so you have Melissa Jones Elementary School in North Guilford. You know, that school is needed there, because those kids at such a young age will be on the bus for 45 minutes, otherwise. As they get older, you know, you have the single high school, the kids are on bus routes if they're taking the bus, they're on the buses for 40 minutes. Well, when you're in high school, it's a little bit easier to take, but when you're six, seven, eight years old, that's a long day. And so elementary schools, as, you know, you all probably know, tend to be a little bit more strategically, geographically located. So you take that into consideration, it just, it makes regionalization a lot bigger for conversation. You know, you go to Amity, Amity K through 8 is not regionalized, but their high school is. Again, there's a reason for that. The younger kids need to be closer to home, so they're not on the buses for a long time.
Well, the other issue that I see with that is, so you say North Branford has to go to Branford, and you're going to close all the schools, so you close all the brick and mortar in North Branford, like, what are you going to do with those buildings? And then Branford, their schools may not be equipped to handle all of our kids in there, so what, you're going to build new or add-on? It just doesn't make sense to close the buildings in towns, but then have to spend all this money in another town.
And if we don't start putting the proper audits in place, our cities are all failing continually. We have a Marvin place to review them. Somehow, they are excluded from this conversation of finding savings. So all the money that is being reduced and squeezed out of the towns is not going into the state coffers, it's being distributed to New Haven, Hartford, Bridgeport. They need to come to the table and be accountable for what we are giving them, if that's going to continue. You know, of the $2 billion of education funding, small towns get a very little portion of it.
Not only that, is, what are we paying to these other towns that are going to take our students? And then what do we do with the bonds, the bonds that we have on our schools that we still have to pay? You know?
Right, and some, right, it's, Durham is going through that right now. They closed a school, and it's, it's been very difficult to repurpose that building because of the regional structure. So there's just a lot that goes into this, and I don't, I don't see this being a topic for this session at all.
It's like closing your house, but you still got a mortgage payment.
Yeah.
What do you do? You know? All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll continue the dialogue.
Senator Cohen, you hear from her at all, then?
You know, I didn't. We are in, I know the Environment Committee's been, she's on the Environment Committee, I am not, that's why I'm here. My guess is she, she got caught up, because they've been JF-ing bills out of committees. It's a very busy time tonight, you know, I got a little bit lucky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, we appreciate it coming. Thank you. Motion approved in minutes of the March 5th, 2019, to water pushing through all authority in Town Council?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections?
I would like to make a correction. On page seven of the minutes, after Councillor Candelora asked to have our state Rep. come, I was the one that asked to have the state senator come. Even though she's not here tonight, I did make that request.
Yes, it was, it was Councillor Diamond that asked them.
Okay, with that one correction, roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Abstain.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved, the March 12th, 2019, Budget Workshop.
So moved. Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Abstain.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Abstain.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleom.
Abstain.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving to the regular Town Council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, Economic Development Commission.
No meeting.
Park and Recreation Commission.
No meeting.
Police Commission.
Police Commission met on March 11th. There was continuing discussion about our new police chief. There's a special meeting tomorrow night, as many of you know. Interim Chief Lovelace also stated that the purchase orders for the automatic license plate readers are almost completed. The full-size SUV will be delivered soon. It's a special order, so it's taking a little longer. The Ford Explorer is getting the equipment installed, and the commission voted to give the old Explorer to the town. The commission also updated a number of policies, and the commission then spent time discussing a program, a software program called Lexus Nexus, which is part of the strategic plan of the new police chief. It's a very effective software program that regionalizes all kinds of information to help predict, prevent, and combat crime. It's a very, very effective tool, and something that our new police chief does want to have. So I am, at this point, going to ask Mayor if I can amend the agenda to add 9F purchase of the Lexus Nexus program.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
And I would just say that the next Police Commission, well, there's a meeting tomorrow night in reference to our new police chief, and to accept the contract, and...
The last Fire Commissioners' meeting, the budget was discussed again. Also, the condition and age of a couple of pieces of apparatus was talked about. Also, there was concerns about replacing firefighting gear, hose, and breathing apparatus bottles that are wearing out. That's it.
Board of Education, Town Communications, Town Council Communication Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and zoning, they met, what, two weeks ago this Thursday? They basically discussed, they still have the application for the medical building down across from, on 139. They're still waiting for DOT's input on their drainage and on what they need to do for their sightline. And the other one they did was, they're re-subdividing a piece of property on Totoket Road, where it was a thirteen lot, I think it's gone to ten or something like that now, getting rid of a future town road, gonna do it all with driveways, so. That was it.
Thank you. East Shore Health District Department. North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
That's meeting, the next meeting is April 1st.
Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee met tonight for the first time with the Fire Pension Committee, and we just discussed, they gave us an overview of the pension and how it works, and so we were gathering some information from them in regards to their pension, and they've made a pitch to us, they would like to see something happen in this budget year in regards to it. And we just said we would take it under advisement and discuss it during our budget negotiations.
Thank you. Next is Town Managers' Report, update on Plan of Conservation and Development.
Yes, the Town Planner had submitted a update there. You can see in the packet that the survey is nearly complete, it'll be closing on Friday 22nd. The current number is closer to 600 respondents to that survey, which is good, it continues to climb, and hopefully we'll put out a push this week for anyone that hasn't seen it or had a chance to get that, and that'll close on Friday. And again, they're on track to have the second workshop for April's, April 11th, and so everything's moving along.
Thank you.
I have a question for the Town Manager. We were talking previously about water company access and getting, and having contact with regional water authority on that, is there any update on that?
I do not have an update on that. I knew that, I think Roger and Carrie were trying to get a meeting together for that, you know, I'll have to check.
Okay, as well, we had a question pending for the Town Attorney on the rubbish contract, refuse contract. Do we have any update on that?
We are meeting with Johns tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Next is the Board of Assessment Appeals Report.
Yes, David Ambrose had submitted a quick analysis results, if you will, I think he had talked about it last time, and just prepared a short summary, that they have basically reduced it only by 10,000 in terms of how many they had, they only had three out of the six. So, there's a nice synopsis in terms of what transpired through that process, that we're gaining 520 and only had to give up 10,000. So I thought it was a nice point of interest for the council to see, and I think they do a great job, or they were successful, I would define that as successful this year in defending those values. David wasn't able to be here tonight to answer any questions you may have, but if you do, we can always reserve. I think he's, I'm scheduling him to come for the next meeting, April 2nd, to have, answer any questions you may have. We'd like to award the revow award for the meeting on the 2nd, so I'll have him present for that, and if you have any additional questions on the Assessment Appeals, you can certainly handle that at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could also mention, I didn't place on here, but the school's security cameras, that bid award should be coming for the April 2nd meeting as well, and we'll try to keep that agenda light, as it is a combined budget hearing and Town Council meeting, so.
Next is Community Events and Presentations. We had a proclamation for the 107th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, but that is being pushed off, they couldn't make it tonight to our next meeting?
Yes, like, they'd like to come back on April 2nd, maybe, who knows, maybe they'll incorporate that into a sort of a civics lesson of budget public hearing, I'm not sure, but again, we'll try to keep the agenda light, but I think that's a nice, that'd be a nice event for them and for the council.
Next item is Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondents.
I'll take advantage of this, Citizen Statements, to remind anyone who's watching this, this meeting, that the, at the Edward Smith Library, every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday through tax season, there's free tax assistance with volunteers from the IRS. There are some restrictions, people have to earn less than $54,000, but there are some exceptions for people who have disabilities, limited speakers of English, who need help in preparing their taxes. It's been very successful at the library. It is free for those people who qualify, and it's every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday through April 11th.
Is there a time?
One, thank you, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
Thank you. All right, next is Resignations and Appointments. We have nothing listed. Unfinished Business, Discussion, Action, Future Budget Plan and Initiative.
I don't have anything at this time.
Update on 944 Totoket Road Remediation.
Yeah, well, Kurt has indicated that the team will be on site or to schedule a survey this week, should be happening now that we've gotten through the snowstorms and hopefully clearing that it's drying up a little bit. I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add, but they should, they've indicated that they'll be out there this week to survey that, and once that's done, then it's just finishing up the application and getting that in and proceeding along.
Okay, thank you. Next is Review and Approval of Bid specification, bid number one, 2019-2020 Professional Cleaning Service.
Yeah, this has come back, there were some comments at the last meeting with respect to, I believe it was Councilor Candelora that asked about background checks, we put that in, page four is highlighted, and also there was a discussion on restoration, I think, of floors versus stripping and waxing floors. So, that language was highlighted on page seven, in terms of changes, and there are other spots within the packet that have strip and wax floors and dust the vents, the vents were another comment as well. So, I believe we've gotten those changes reflected in this, and that would just be the council's approval to award to go out.
Well, I saw this was already, the last one that was in, two weeks ago in our packet, was already published in the sound.
Yeah.
And, so that was in there, and the one that we decided not to move forward was in the sound also, about the electricians and what, so why are those in there if we...
Couldn't, they jumped the gun and couldn't catch, I couldn't catch those after the meeting, pulled those out before they got into the, into the pipeline for that. So, I've corrected that internally, that those are not to go out until the council approves.
Yeah, okay. So, so what happens with the cleaning one that was already in there, now we've made these changes?
Yeah.
So you don't honor the first, if the first one is pulled?
The first one's gotta, yeah, we've gotta pull the first one, this is, if this is approved tonight, this will go back out there, we've gotta redo that one.
Okay.
There's a problem with background checks, because it's a, really a generic term, and we have no idea who's, who's going to do this, to the extent that it would be satisfactory to this body, and how much it's going to add to the cost of this contract. You know, I'm not arguing against it, I'm just saying that there's a cost that's going to be associated with this, which we may not be able to tease out, and neither are we going to be able to ascertain the usefulness or effectiveness or breadth or depth of the background check. So, I'm not quite sure if it's satisfactorily described in here for our purposes.
I'd like to ask the Town Attorney, he should be here, he was running a little late when he called me earlier, if a bonded company that we have, each one of these companies is bonded, right?
Right.
Do they require background checks when they hire their employees? And do we have to double, you know, double what they do? So.
And here he is.
Here he is.
Like George, let's just say, like, they do a background check for, I don't know, gun permit, or...
Well, that's gonna be a whole lot more extensive than...
Right, exactly.
Than this, you know, there's just gonna be a cost, and...
Yeah, but we're not, I don't think the town has to assume that cost.
Now, they'll build it into the...
It's going to be rolled into it. So we may get a, you know, a significantly different number, or you may get a, an inquiry, a background check, that doesn't, doesn't really look very deeply. I don't know. It's just a question of, you know, as Mike points out, you know, it's a bonded company...
It may, and it may be duplication, too.
Yeah.
It may be like, that's not what they're already doing.
Well, it might, it might be duplication, but it might be a nice opportunity to, you know, tack on a per-person cost.
The only thing I was concerned was the access, you know?
Yeah, I understand that. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just questioning that portion of it.
Vin, my question was to you, if, Vin?
Yeah, no, I'm...
If I...
I'm just asking. I heard the question, I think I hear, okay, go.
If we do a, if we do a bond with a cleaning company...
Yes.
And they're bonded, okay? So that means their employees should have gone through some type of check for them to get bonded through the company. Are we duplicating the services by having a background check done on any employees that come in here, or whatever else? I mean, if one of their employees takes something, I'm sure the bonding company will come in.
Right, I understand the question. I don't know, though, if just the mere fact that there's a bond in place...
Should we just check with the company?
That the bond means that there's been the background check that you want, you know, and there may be more sensitive areas that you have concerns about, you know, maybe the clerk's office, rather than this room, or, you know, so, the, what type of bond is it? You know, anyone can go get a surety bond, you don't need a back, you don't need a criminal check to get a surety bond. So, I would say, just because you're having a bond doesn't necessarily mean that there's been the background check that you're looking for. And, so, you can start with the conversation with the vendors, to ask them whether or not they've performed background checks, and whether or not that's information that they would share, and that may satisfy...
And that would have to set a limit on it, too. What do we want, people with no felonies, people with serious misdemeanors? What, what limits are you gonna set on your, your background checks? For prospective employees?
Well, then, right, you're gonna have to balance that against, you know, the trend, particularly in the state, is the second chance, and depending upon the, depending upon the crime, and depending upon the time that has passed since the rehabilitation, you know?
I think we're opening up a bigger can of worms that we probably really wanna get into.
Possibly, I don't remember if it was Tom, but somebody had mentioned just putting a question.
Well, can you ask a question? I mean, I know you can, but would it be wise to ask a question on a, on a bid, say, you know, do you, do you background check your employees? And, you know, and maybe, I don't know how you word it, at what levels, or something, is that, is that appropriate?
Do, so the question, do you perform background checks?
Right.
Criminal background checks? Criminal checks. You know, and again, do you only want a criminal background check? Do you want a financial background check? You may not need a financial background check unless they're gonna have access to areas where you may have, are there checks in the tax collector's drawer, or there's, is there, you know, is there cash somewhere? I mean, there's a, but that's, the theft of money is what the bond is for, you know, the theft of property is what the bond is for. It's not to protect you against the vendor having a, an employee that happens to have a criminal background. That's not the purpose of the bond. So, oftentimes in municipalities, they wanna have background checks, criminal background checks, particularly if they're performing services at the police department, where they may, or, you know, in other areas where there might be vital statistics, where there's concerns of public records disappearing. If, but if they're cleaning, let's say, public works, they're, no offense, it may be less of a concern, you know? So, it, I do see it in municipalities, very dependent upon what building you're talking about. Routinely with police departments, they want background checks, criminal background checks. Town halls, I've seen it go both ways. But I do think you shouldn't rely on the bond as the satisfaction of that inquiry, because that's not the intent of the bond. And, but if you wanna ask that question, that question, have you performed criminal background checks on your employees? For this purpose, you're asking the employer, or you're not asking the employee specifically, because there are certain questions you can ask and you cannot ask. That question, you should be, you should, can ask. But then the next question is, I just wanna take a look at, is if the answer is no, you know, I think the law, I send an email to Courtney to see if she responds, the law may have changed on this in the last number of years about, you know, blocking the box and, you know, giving the second chance, and how much time you have to allow to pass, and things of that nature, so I just want to...
That's what I said.
Or you strike it.
It's a big can of worms when you get into it.
Exactly.
Well, would it be, would it be legal to have the question, and, and that also is how you make a partial decision? So if three companies did back, criminal background checks, and one didn't, can you use that as part of your decision as to who to hire? Or is that, is that, is that legal, is what I'm asking?
Again, it's gonna depend on the answer to the, the law, on whether or not it would form a discriminatory basis for not awarding a bid, because you don't want, you know, felons, or, you know, working in your town hall or in your police department. So, but, I would say, so the short answer is, I would just wanna check the law on the second, the second chance law, and in this context, whether or not there's a provision. That's gonna, that's gonna be the answer to your question.
So we'll just table this again until the April 2nd meeting?
Or if you wanna, if, where are you on your agenda? You're not about to adjourn, are you?
No, it's to approve the bid specs for the professional cleaning services.
I mean, if you wanna move on and pass it for a moment?
Oh, okay, yeah, we can come back to it.
I'll try to get you an answer now.
Tonight, okay.
As long as my battery doesn't die. I will, I will do my best to get you an answer, if not, you can table it at the end.
Okay, we'll pass it, then. We're going to New Business, Discussion and Action, Discussion of Property Maintenance Standards.
I asked to have this put on the agenda, because for the several years I've been here, I've had many, many people ask me about blight, and why we don't have better blight standards, and why we can't do something about whatever their particular pet peeve is. and why we can't do something about whatever their particular pet peeve is. In thinking about it and talking to people, I discovered that there are a number of towns that have what they call property maintenance standards, which are standards for the continued maintenance and nuisance abatement on property, focusing on things like exterior grounds, visible facades, accessory structures, stockpiling visible waste, storage of vehicles in the front yard. And basically, they're focusing on keeping property in good repair. Now, clearly, we don't have to invent anything because other communities have operated programs like this quite successfully, one of which that I'm becoming familiar with is in East Haven, where they've had the program up for a dozen years. So, some people have been meeting and talking about it. And some others have gone to East Haven to talk with their property maintenance officer. And I've asked Chris Kranick, who did go to a meeting with the property maintenance officer to apprise us of this, of this a little bit. And Bill Savistano has put in front of everyone some comments from last fall. And I think he has a few words to say, too. What I'm hoping is that this body might be amenable to visiting this subject and taking a look at the program that they have in East Haven, which is running very effectively, and they're quite happy with it. I understand the biggest proponent in East Haven of the standards, an enthusiast, is the mayor, who is trying very hard to keep his town looking as well as it could. So, what I'm hoping is, if you think about this and are willing to look toward it, that we might ask to have the town attorney take a look at the East Haven ordinance and give back some feedback when he's done with this. And see if we can't go forward with something that maybe will get us a little spiffier. So, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask if Chris Kranick can address the body and give some feedback of what he's learned from East Haven.
Chris?
Hi, Chris Kranick, 49 Cortland Drive. I'm just going to leave that if I'm told this is the ordinance in East Haven. So, I'll be brief. The purpose of my being here tonight is basically to give you some background and an overview. So, as George Miller was saying, there's, it's been a bipartisan group that has gotten together to try and come up with some solutions either on the, you know, private citizen, personal property level as well as the commercial properties. Because they're both areas of concern to different citizens. So, we've been meeting for five or six months or so, trying to come up with some ideas. So, what we ended up doing is we looked at the East Haven ordinance. We thought that was a pretty well-written ordinance, and that's been in effect for about 12 years. They've had some success with it. I met with the East Haven town planner. And we spoke for, he was very generous with his time. We spoke for maybe an hour and a half. He was kind of going over the ins and outs of that as well. So, what we're hoping to achieve here tonight is to just begin this discussion that there are some citizens in town who would be interested in some property standards that would address both, you know, personal property, wherever the issue could be, and also some commercial properties, whether they're in disrepair or what have you. So, it's kind of really just a starting point. We're asking that the town's attorney, you know, take a look at this. And hopefully, it's the beginning of a discussion that we could take some of what's been done here in East Haven and modify it. Of course, you know, something that would be fitting of North Branford. So, that's kind of where we're coming from. We'd be happy as a group if we got further along to, you know, to assist in any way that we could.
Chris, is the town planner the blight enforcement officer?
He is, yeah, he took that job. He took that added responsibility on.
Now, this ordinance in East Haven, as I understand it, does not really step on the authority of the planning and zoning department. It addresses areas of concern that are not addressed under planning and zoning. And importantly, at least from my point of view, is that it operates with citations, which are used in East Haven to achieve remediation, while they provide monetary penalties. Those are used in property liens where appropriate. It is apparently especially useful in bank-owned properties, which have problems in a lot of neighborhoods. They have built-in hearing procedures, appeals procedures, and categories for accommodation for special circumstances. So, it's at least a starting point to talk about. Bill, did you have some comments?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind?
No, go ahead, Bill.
It's Bill Savistano, Sunnyside Drive. And we've got a little dialogue going already. I can tell you how I got about five years ago on Sunnyside Drive. I heard secondhand that one of my neighbors, and I knew he had a problem. He lives on the other side of the block, so I don't see his yard every day. But anyway, he's a severe hoarder. I don't know about the worst ones in town. If you want to go on YouTube, he's featured on. All you have to do is click on North Branford slash hoarder, and the video is still there. It's interviewed by Channel Eight, and they come out and did a piece on him. Anyway, he's pretty severe. Now, saying that, I know the man from the block. I'm a friend of his, he's a fellow veteran. This guy's a combat veteran. And only from the block that I know him, a little bit from the VFW. And I tried to help him. And I'm trying to figure out how I can help him without being personal. Well, I found out that, you know, with his conditions in his combat, he may not have gotten all his benefits. So, I said, "Well, if I find somebody from the VA, would you talk to them?" And that's how I got two different people over a year and a half's time into his house, hoping to try to help him. Because I wanted him to go in there and talk benefits, but really maybe help him with his other situation. So, that's how I got involved. At the time, I sent an email, or I think I even talked with Mike about the fact that we don't have an ordinance. He said that we're good doing something statewide, with something that was universal, could be used all over. That really never happened. I think it's still bouncing around up there. And then I got, after these guys took over from the VA, I kind of dropped it for a while. And of course, it ended up where I tried to call them back and say, just point blank, "Are you making any headway?" And the HIPAA laws kicked in, and nobody would talk to me. That's how I got involved. And fast forward, now, at the time, when I did talk to Mike, there was no, we didn't have an enforcement officer. We were in limbo there for a few years. So, after Tom Hogarty got involved, I called Tom. Tom's been very diligent as far as concerning the town. He's, we have like six severe cases of hoarding in town. And Tom's been working on it. Tom does a report, I don't know if you know it, biannually at the planning and zoning meeting. He talks about what he does out of his office. And the hoarding is only part of it. And he does a lot, a lot of, and he's only a part-time person. So, we, we, a year ago January, I was at a meeting, and this, this that I'm talking about wasn't on Tom's list that he put out for that evening. And I said, I asked to speak, and Mr. Dulac says, "Okay." And basically, this guy is so severe that Tom said he kind of gave up on him. Well, that opened up a dialogue. And Harry Dulac said, "Well, we'll have more discussion." Fast forward to last November, and that's what George just mentioned. We had an open discussion at the planning and zoning. Al's usually at those meetings, but he wasn't there that night. But we had a good open discussion. And in your packet earlier, I left at your, at your, at your table there, a letter from me that was going to go in the Tataca Times last fall, before that meeting. But it got bumped because of all the political ads. So, Frank never put it in. And I was hoping to get more people out for that meeting, that was the idea. But we got a few people on over the phone to get out, and a nice discussion. And by the way, there's two more pages in that packet that I gave you that Pam Johnson from the Sound did a wonderful article on. And just basically brought the light, everything that we brought to light in that meeting that really covered it just like covering the minutes. But long and short of it is, Chris has spoke about it, George has spoke about it. I'll just end by saying this. We're going to bring some more awareness to it. And you know, it's not just a hoarders. We've got a beautiful founding community. And according to the first impressions report, if you saw it, very little blight. Well, they certainly didn't go on Sunnyside Drive. And they didn't go on David Lane, a quechero, because they may have changed their report. But going back to the blight issue and, except, let's put aside the hoarding. If you, I don't go all around town, right? Go 22, 17, 80, Village Road, that's my neighborhood there. But right in my neighborhood, I think four or five, besides the extreme case, there's different, how should I say, levels of dilapidation or abuse. And there's a couple of areas where you really have to be concerned. Now, up on one house out, no names. And if you go down Orga off 22, on Orga, turn right on Village. There's a house out there, it's one block in from here. Looks like it could be abandoned. There's people living there, it's a new car, yeah. But the yard is severely overgrown, a lot of trees and branches down, like nobody's living in there. Now, that would have to be a case of, you have to be delicate there. It could be seniors that are, you know, on fixed income, so. Coming down, it's not about coming down on those persons. And there's other various things around town. We'll do that for another minute. What I wanted to say about awareness is, we're going to bring, get some ordinance in place and bring it, make the public and maybe make our residents aware that we noticed there's something going on. There's different levels of abuse we're talking about. Let's face it, you know, for some of us that are older, 30 years ago, you didn't have all these storage facilities now. It's like an American, it's like a thing to store stuff. You get these places all over the place, but now people are doing it in their yard. If they've got a severe hoarder down the street, and the guy is, you know, maybe getting up in the age, he starts collecting, he's going to be as, if that person is not checked, this guy is going to be just as bad as the other. And the last thing I'll leave you with is, we had, going back a couple of years, we have a public safety and communications committee that doesn't seem to be active. Maybe we should get volunteers. I'll be part of it. Don't ask me to run it, I'll be part of it. Maybe we should get that activated, so we can get some dialogue in the town. So, if we get that situation, senior, maybe we can be of help to some of these people, not just come down. And that's what it's all about, to be of help. And maybe we can get that committee activated again and go from there. And you guys work on the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't know exactly how we can do this because I would like to have some commentary from Mr. Marino. So, I think we probably need me to make a motion for that to happen because we're asking him to do some work.
Do you want me to weigh in before your motion or after your motion? Or, do you care?
Well, I want to weigh in before we make the motion for that. So, in my 10 years sitting up here, I've seen this at least three or four times. And we've had the town attorneys, different town attorneys, all came back with the same, you know, they looked at it, they came back with the same conclusion that we're not enforcing what's already on our zoning books now. So, if we're not able to enforce what we have, why would we want to make more rules that we aren't going to enforce and we don't have anyone to enforce them? So, I'm just, I'm not saying where we go with this. I'm just telling you what happened the last three or four times that I saw this.
That's a shame on us.
That's the truth, though.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you.
And if you've got Tom Hogarty in here, he'd tell you. You know, he's picking out certain ones. He has the, he has the bite behind him.
Well, he's got a different kind of bite. He's got a different kind of bite. And that's why this was interesting to me, because it did involve...
And like I said, I'm not telling you I'm against it or for it.
I'm not saying...
I'm telling you the history that I've seen here. Yeah, they've been referred to town attorneys. I mean, we went the whole work.
Right.
Court, you know, court orders and everything else, so. So, I think, and so maybe, George, what it is, is, and maybe he'll come back with the same thing and say, "Folks, start enforcing what you have." So, I think maybe we do need to tell him, "Hey, go look at what we have and tell us, you know, that, do we need more or do we need to enforce it?"
Or it could be a depends moment, a depends moment, right? Because I had had a conversation with Tom a number of months ago. And I, you know, it might have even been a year ago, it's, time flies. But I had asked, you know, "Do you have, you know, why don't you have a blight ordinance?" You know, because I had heard anecdotally some complaints and whatnot. And he said that there was not a desire to put such an ordinance in place, at least at that moment, because of concerns on how the ordinance would be used. I do, in the five other communities I represent, I believe they all have blight ordinances. And they're enforced through the zoning enforcement officer generally. And it's an alternative tool to zoning violations. It's actually a stronger tool for most purposes. It's stronger because to the extent you issue a citation and you accrue a fine, it has a priority above the mortgage, as opposed to a zoning violation, which is subsequent and right to the mortgage. So, generally speaking, not that you do this for profit, but mortgage companies are put on notice when there's a blighted property, which then could trigger violations on the mortgage documents for the property owner. The mortgage company at least is put on notice for purposes of preservation of its interests, for purposes of its security. So, to the extent that we care about protecting their interests, there is a benefit to them. There's also a benefit to the town because to the extent that the mortgage company wants to protect its interests, it pays the lien off. So, therefore, you're not chasing necessarily the property owner if there's a mortgage on the property. So, we've utilized it very successfully in several towns. In Trumbull, when I was a town attorney there, I think they had earned over $110,000 in one calendar year enforcing of the blight ordinance. So, it's an ordinance that can be used successfully, but it could also be used in a very draconian, harsh way, depending on what your standards are. And all of these ordinance, whether it be blight or zoning, are discretionary in nature. So, even though it's on the books... So even though it's on the books, you can, uh, the town cannot be compelled to, uh, exercise that enforcement. So it remains discretionary, uh, but you then have to, uh, be careful that you're not running the risk of selective enforcement. So, you know, in other words, your grass is too high, my grass is too short, uh, you're getting fined for high grass, but mine is brown patched and unsightly, but I'm not gonna be penalized for that. So, you know, you may wanna set standards as to what constitutes a blight. And so my, you know, and again, I can, I have a number of samples. Now I have another one and I'm happy to absorb them all and suggest something, but you might wanna consider, uh, some form of a subcommittee for me to work with because you don't want my thoughts and my judgment to be confined in a document because this is your town. And, uh, so, you know, you might wanna have, whether it be one or two members of this body, maybe a member of the zoning commission, maybe a member of the public at large, uh, to have a, a subcommittee for purposes of working with me. Because there's no magic to creating the ordinance. The, the, the importance is what do you want that ordinance to say? Uh, and that's really what I would need to learn. So we'd have, either have to do it through a process like this where you give me insight and then I can come back and present, we can go back and forth that way, or we can go to a subcommittee, uh, I can work with them and then come back based upon that recommendation that we, bless you, that we come to. However you wanna go, I'm happy to do it. Again, it's not a, from my perspective, it's not a difficult process to create, it's just what do you want it to say?
So if you have a sprinkler system and, and a lawn maintenance program, we can't have you on the, uh...
You know what? Uh, I have told the water authority that if they put water on my property, I would solve all their budget problems. This is the way my wife keeps the faucet on all the time. So that's why my well is always dry. So, uh, but, you know, so it's, uh, you know...
Yeah, that, that's...
That was a, you know, an example of an extreme. But oftentimes it's, the, the problem is, uh, that house isn't painted and it's, you think it's unsightly, but I don't. Uh, I have, uh, I believe my artwork is this old, uh, you know, collectible, uh, gas station-y type of thing, you know, collectible items, and I've decided to display it. Well, I don't, you know, and people are complaining about that. I mean, I, in the town of Orange, I had complaints about that, you know, that the property owners thought that that was art. And, you know, the neighbors thought that it was unsightly. So, you know, you, you do put yourself in the position, uh, or in the middle of that conflict, which you're in anyway. You know, uh, you, you know, you're getting, you're gonna get the complaints, but where, you know, where are you ending up on? Is it art or is it blight?
Lawn ornaments. What's a lawn ornament?
You know, if I take a, I, I take an abandoned car and I cut the top off and I fill it with dirt and I have flowers growing out of it, is it, is it an abandoned car? Is it a vehicle? And is it a violation? It's not a registered vehicle, but, uh, it's, it's a podded plant. So, you know, you, you gotta be careful. And that's why if you're gonna go down this road, uh, which I don't, uh, which I, I do recommend because I think it is a very useful tool, uh, you just have to be careful about your definitions and what you want to, uh, if you have specific concerns, you wanna articulate what those concerns are so you can guide the enforcement officer. Okay?
Yeah, I, I think a subcommittee is, is a tremendous idea, you know?
And then, and then, you know, we can come back in a couple of months after we've gone through the process.
Any recommendations on a subcommittee? What, council people, citizens?
Very public works.
Come on, Franny.
Franny's got enough to do right now.
You get enough meetings.
Yeah.
Just lastly, Mr. Mayor, we've talked with Tom Hogarty and he's given me the impression if he had a little more areas that he could work with, meaning enhance the ordinances or, he can do more. He's done a lot and he's done it for, he's done it through the state system, which hasn't cost the town any money. And I forgot to mention before, I've been watching for a couple of years, the city of Ansonia has really been out there with blight. Now, I'm not comparing towns, I don't even know where Ansonia, they've assigned a lot of blight.
You can't even compare those towns.
Huh?
You can't even compare North Bramford.
No, I'm just saying what's in the paper and what they, the mayor, okay, Mr. Mayor? The mayor is really the guy behind the whole thing, stamp out blight. And the reason I bring that up, again, we, I wanna compare towns, is Mr. John Marino, which is part of, uh, Mr. Marino's firm, I don't know the name of the firm, he's the corporate counsel for the city of Ansonia. So he's probably one that implemented that, that new blight ordinance, so he's part of Mr. Marino's firm. Thanks.
I have a question, like, I know there's an ordinance on the book for like A-frame signs, signs. I mean, drive up and down the road every now, there's A-frame signs everywhere. And I know in particular, there's a couple, you're pulling out of a street, it's blocking the line, it's like...
Well, so, some of those are, uh, enforceable under, uh, planning and zoning's guidelines right now.
Well, I already know, there's people that have called and they were told, they were given permission to put them up, which I found interesting. Uh, you know, last summer, there was a guy hitting a motorcycle and you pull out of there, you know where I'm talking.
Yeah, I do.
It's dangerous.
Yeah.
So why are, why are we not enforcing? And I know several people that have called on that. Like, is there a way...
That is a zoning...
Well, is there a way that some people can have them, some people can't?
Well, signs are generally regulated through your zoning, uh, regulations. And, uh, so depending upon what we're talking about by way of sign and location, uh, generally speaking, uh, there would be a permit issued for the, uh, for the, uh, you know, putting up of the sign. Uh, and, uh, it could be, it, it could be allowed for a limited period of time. It could be a weekend, for example, a weekend sale advertisement for a local business and, uh, yeah, they don't have your zoning regulations in front of the, uh, but, you know, it may allow for a limited window and maybe it was there for that limited window. But, you know, so that is the, uh, you'd have to look at your zoning regulations, but that would all be forced, uh, enforced in the zoning department.
Yeah.
So if you have an issue with, you see a sign and you, you should just refer to your zoning, uh, enforcement officer and ask whether or not, is there a permit for that sign? Why is that sign there? And if there's not, they should be able to just go and, uh, most towns will, uh, in Orange, the zoning enforcement officer goes out with someone from Public Works, they pick up the sign, they throw it in the back of a pickup truck, bring it down to the public works. Uh, the owner has contacted, that they have twenty-four hours to pick up the sign and if it's not, it's disposed of.
So, I mean, that's like the risk that was brought up a little earlier in the meeting that, um, why put another ordinance or regulation in place if we can't, um, enforce what we have?
Well, it's not that you can't enforce what you have, you could always enforce what you have.
See, we don't enforce what we have.
But this, as I've stated, uh, if I had a choice between enforcing a zoning ordinance or a blight, a zoning regulation or a blight ordinance as to aesthetics, because that's what blight is really gonna address, I would always go with blight over zoning. Because it gives me a priority over the mortgage. So, and I, I tend to get better results that way because it has greater teeth because of its, uh, uh, priority in the chain of title. And, uh, zoning enforcement is, is a much, uh, different process that you have to employ. And then when you ultimately have an enforceable lien, you know, oftentimes we're behind a two, three, four hundred thousand dollar mortgage and we'll put the lien on the land records and hope one day that either equity grows or they sell and they need to pay us off. But, you know, again, the, the purpose of these types of ordinances, zoning, blight, is not, it's not intended to be punitive in nature, meaning where, it's not intended to be a money generator, it's meant to be coercive in nature. So, so just so we're, ever, if, there's no, uh, uh, confusion at all or any false sense of hope of generating extra income, I mean, if we ever went to court on zoning violations and/or even blight, often, oftentimes, not, I'd say, all the times that I've been in court on any of these, the judges have said it's a coercive, not punitive, measure. Once you get performance, you've satisfied your coercive intent. And instead of getting that fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar lien that everyone's getting excited about, you know, and every town has them, generally what we get reimbursed are our hard costs, our attorney's fees. So we walk away with, you know, whatever that, uh, sum is rather than the larger amount. Of course, it's about compliance.
But, but part of, I think, what we're talking about, at least the, the specific subject that came up, um, has to do with safety, which, um, could be very costly if something bad happens.
But you're talking about a sign being in a, in a right-of-way or in a, in a sightline? But that, again, contact, you, you, you're driving by that sign, you see it, assuming it's during business hours, call the, the zoning department, report it, and that person should go out and, and inspect and, or, uh, you know, and then address it. So you don't have to, that's really not a, like, it's a, that's not a problematic issue that we should not be able to just go out tomorrow and just do. Because all you have to do is send your zoning enforcement officer out and pick the sign. It's not like there's a building in the way and, uh, someone put a building up and, oh my God, what are we gonna do? We can't move it. Talking about a sign.
Right.
So just send, send out, and if, uh, uh, the, the CEO, you know, cannot perform the function alone, then the CEO can go out with someone from Public Works. If it's a, a sandwich board that's too heavy to lift, it requires two, and you throw it in the back of the truck, bring it on down and you end up adding it to a, what becomes a collection of signs.
Just, just a quick one. Ron Ciana, fifty-eight, David Lane, Norfolk, uh, speaking as a citizen. It's, my understanding that the zoning enforcement officer doesn't have any blight, he can't issue a citation, uh, talking about signs. If he takes down the sign, would that be considered stealing? Because he can't issue a citation, even though there's an ordinance against it.
If, if it's a zoning regulation that does not allow the sign without a permit, so it's not a permitted sign, it's an illegal sign. And particularly if it's in a right-of-way that's posing a, a risk to public health, safety and welfare, can absolutely go and take that sign and throw it in the back of your truck.
But my, my point is, the zoning enforcement officer cannot issue a citation, he doesn't have, he can't write a ticket. He can take you to court.
Those cases, this, the cases have been referred to town attorney before and they have taken action.
Right. But I'm just talking about a simple thing, like somebody puts a tax sale sign, you know, in the middle of the road, you know, he can't issue a citation on that where it's a simple thing of writing, you know, either move the sign or get a twenty-dollar ticket.
That, that's the thing, so the, the recourse there is, if it's an illegal sign that was put up without permission, just go and pick it up and take it down. Not you, the, the authorized officer. You know, again, I, I actually, in, I think it was in Seymour, I had to educate the zone, some of the zoning members to say, you don't have the independent authority to go and take signs. If you do it, it's stealing. If your zoning enforcement officer does it, they're unauthorized to do it. So, you know, again, no one on this body has the authority to, uh, and I remember, I live in Orange and I was going down, uh, the post road one day and we have this prohibition on the post road, there's not supposed to be any signs. And there was this very offensive mannequin that this business had put out there. And it was, I mean, it was kind of offensive, it was like, uh, the shape of a female and it looked like it had a noose around her and, I mean, it was like weird, right? And I was, it was a Saturday and I was just going down, I said, I really have no independent authority, I'm the town attorney, but I went into the, I was in my pickup truck, I pulled into the parking lot and then we had issued, I know the zoning enforcement officer had issued a warning, say, don't put that out again. And of course, it's, it's never Monday through Friday, that's the problem. It's Friday night to Sunday night or Sa- Friday night to Monday morning, right? Because, you know, it's, that's when the businesses get their biggest foot traffic, so that's when they put out their illegal signs to bring people in. That's at least in my experience. And by the time Monday comes around and your enforcement officer's back, the, the violation is gone. Uh, and so I said, what do I got to lose? Uh, so I pulled in, I, I went into the, uh, into the establishment, I handed my business card, I was dressed, I was on my way to the transfer station, I was dressed in a pair of shorts and a ripped shirt, and I said, I'm the town attorney and you've been told about that and if that's not gone by the time that I come back, uh, I'm gonna have contact to the police. That body, as I was looking in the rearview mirror of the mannequin, was like, he, the man was so shaken, it was in five hundred pieces as, by the time he got it back. But he removed it immediately, you know? So I wouldn't recommend anyone going to do anything like that. But if you felt, any citizen can say, and you shouldn't do it, but you, you don't, because citizens have the right to go to court to enforce your zoning regulations. Uh, if the, if, so if you don't feel the town is doing its job, because it's discretionary, so a citizen can bring a lawsuit to, to enforce a zoning, uh, violation. And, uh, so if you're driving down a street, it's Saturday and they're, they're doing it again, you're not gonna engage in confrontation, but just a friendly, hey, you know, I'm a, you know, I'm a, I'm a council member and, you know, this is why, I'm gonna let them know on Monday, I, I hope you're gonna comply with our laws. That's just the conversation, you're not overstepping in doing that. Uh, when I did it, it was quite effective. Uh, and, you know, because most of these violations come when the people that are here to enforce are not here to enforce, because it's Friday to, Friday to Monday morning. And so you gotta be honest and, and appreciate the fact that that's when you're gonna, that's when you're gonna have your problems.
Those, those type of violations, though, are not part of the property maintenance standards.
Correct.
So, th- those are quite different.
Yes.
So, I, you know, that, that's why I, I wanted us to look at this and talk about this and think about this as a way of going forward because it's, it is different from the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, regulations. Uh, and I recognize that, uh, there's a, a problem of, of enforcement, but there's also, uh, a problem of addressing some of the concerns that people have raised over the years, at least to me, um, and that you see as, uh, as you go around town, you know, when, when you have homes that are for years wrapped in Typek, uh, you know, that's, that's a problem in the, in the neighborhoods and, and things along, along those lines.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something, please?
Yes.
My name's Frank Brigano, I live at twenty-three Montgomery Road in Norfolk. As Bill and Chris mentioned, there is an ad hoc group that exists today, I'm a member of it, Bill, Chris and others are a member of this group, and we're more than willing to serve on a committee that the town wishes to put together. Just so you know, as, as Bill alluded to, we've been, we've been meeting, we've been reviewing, uh, ordinances, we've reviewed and edited, uh, East Haven ordinance, we already have experience in this, so you already have a ready-made, uh, group of people that are willing to serve the town in this function. In addition, I just wanna say is that we're looking for a heart-friendly ordinance, we're not looking to be, um, nasty, I guess is the right word to say. We're looking, we understand that there are some people that just cannot clean up their property. It could be because of financial reasons, it could be because of age. And we believe there are means within this community to mobilize people, to help people clean up their property. But we need something like this to help move this along, so if you could please support having, uh, the town attorney look at this, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So, so, um, you would look at that and figure out, um, what type of members or how many members we could put, um, an advisory committee together?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it would be, it would be an...
Hopefully at our next, uh, meeting or...
Right.
Have an idea.
I will, what I will do is I'll, I'll work with the town manager and, uh, we'll put together a recommendation for it. And then, uh, you can make your decision if you want.
Because it should, should contain some council members, maybe the zoning enforcement officer, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Tom's been working on it. He in fact came to me today, I think his angle was different.
Well, see, he's, he was, he came here after a lot of blight ordinances we tried to establish and everything else. So he doesn't really have a sense, like some of the council people, of blight problems that we had before, um, that we've gone to court on numerous times. So this way, at least we could bring him up to speed on some of them.
Yeah. I'll be here tomorrow morning, I'll discuss them.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next is periodic review of authorized depositories.
It's just a, uh, as it mentions, periodic review, showing the different banks that you allow, uh, the whole town assets. Uh, new one on there is Schwab Bank, which is a function of the pension change, and you see Key Bank, that was formerly known as First Niagara, so it's just a name change, but updates the list of the official town depositories.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council designates as official town depositories the institutions listed below and authorizes the town manager and treasurer, finance director to enter into the necessary agreements with each institution. Bank of America, Bank of New with each institution. Bank of America, Bank of New York, Citizens Bank, Dime Bank, H S B C, J P Morgan Chase, Key Bank, People's United Bank, Royal Bank of Canada, Capital Markets Division, Schwab Bank, T D Bank, United Bank, Webster Bank, and Wells Fargo.
Second.
Second?
Any second?
Yeah.
Mayor Dooley.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leom?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is appropriation transfers.
It's a simple transfer that Carrie Duquesne's looking to make in the planning budget. That number on the left-hand side shouldn't be forty-one, ten, three, oh, three, it should be forty-six, seventy, two, oh, two. Apologize for the error. Taking it out of her two, oh, two, and putting it into her three, nineteen.
I make the motion as submitted with the account change to forty-six, seventy.
Two, oh, two.
Two, oh, two.
Second.
And that's the from account.
Second.
So the from account should be forty-six, seventy, two, oh, two.
Yep. Discussion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leom?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is financial report as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Financial report remains unremarkable for this fiscal year. Again, the typical items we focus on, the property tax collections, a couple ticks ahead of last year. Overall, the revenue appears to be about a percent low, but nothing too crazy. The large number that you see in the miscellaneous revenues, one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and five percent of budget, relates to another payment on the dog bite case, and some workers' comp refunds, and automobile property, automobile insurance refunds relating to last year. On the expense side of the house, again, we're maintaining about a percent lower than the year before. The only department that shows over-expended at the time is the has-waste disposal, but if you look at the expended amount, it's only twenty-eight hundred dollars actually expended, so it's a lot tied up in purchase orders that will be for the has-waste. So, again, nothing, nothing really noteworthy on the expense side, nor the revenue side. Any questions, anybody has?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
Just, because I don't know it, I'm curious.
Okay.
How old is the dog bite case, and how many more payments do we have?
Uh, I can get, well...
And if you don't know, it doesn't matter.
I'll get, I'll get the date for it. I think it was like nineteen ninety-nine. What happened was, one of our members in the fire department, a prior member, actually, went to one of the state convention parades with his pet dog. A girl bent down to pet the dog, and the dog bit the girl's nose off. What happened was, our insurance carrier at the time, Reliance, went belly up. So we had to pay three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of pocket, because our insurance company went belly up. They're in receivership, so throughout the periodic process in the last, say, twenty years, we've gotten payments towards our three fifty. I'll get the exact number for what we've gotten so far. We haven't got a hundred percent, we think probably about eighty percent recovered so far of what we've put out. So, that, that's the, I'll get the exact date on it for you, though.
Don't, don't, don't look too hard.
I have a question, not, it's kind of budget-related, but it's in regards to the self-insurance program that we were in.
Yes.
So, so the town, right, the town went out as of July first, and I know there, there is ca- you know, claims that had to be paid after that on the town side. The Board of Ed moved over as of November first, and there's claims that have to be paid out for that also.
Correct.
So the money that is in the stock loss, is it this, or the risk corridor?
That was all put into the health insurance fund, and it's been totally depleted.
What, paying, paying claims? Okay, so, Marie and I were at the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee Meeting on last Thursday night, and in there, Don Wenicki had reported that the Board of Ed has to pay the town a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for claims. Wouldn't they just be taken out of that account?
That account's been depleted. What we've been doing is charging Don's account directly. When claims come in, the health insurance reserve, as far as I understand it, has been totally zeroed out. All the claim, all the money that's been there has been paid out in claims. What happens is, when you pay out, when the, when we walked away from the Anthem Blue Cross Century Preferred Plan?
Yeah.
When they pay out now, there's a twenty percent kicker they put on top of it. So now only you're paying a dollar, and claim you're paying a dollar twenty to Anthem, because they charge you, we're no longer customers of them.
So they pay you an administrative fee of twenty percent?
Yeah. So it's depleted that money, and, and as of last month, the last time I talked to Anita, she had actually charged Don directly, because there's no more money in that pot.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll get confirmation on the whole deal for it, but as far as I am, my understanding of it is, is that the health insurance reserve fund is totally zeroed out, and we're charging Don's expense account, Board of Ed's expense account directly. They tell, they're able to tell us when the claims come in from Anthem, if they're town claims or board claims. Ours are basically all, all wound down, but the majority of them are Board of Ed claims currently, that we're charging their operating budget currently.
Okay.
That may be the one ninety-five he's talking about, I'm not sure.
Well, he said it was for, like, January, February, you know, the, which is understandable, I mean, they just moved over November first.
Right.
So, yes, there are gonna be some claims.
Our, our hope is that by the end of the fiscal year, the tail ends, and everything is paid up, and, and put to bed. That's, that's our, our hope.
So we, I thought we, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars in that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we, it was close to a million, I thought.
Yeah, we had quite a bit of money.
Yeah, okay, so that's all gone.
Gone, Joe.
That's amazing.
Okay.
Anthony, one question.
Yes.
On, let's see, it says here, use or sale of assets.
Yes.
What, do, will we sell something, or how?
Typically, yeah, we've sold, we've been using the public surplus website, that we bought numerous things off of, and gotten some really great deals on. We've used that as a vehicle to sell some equipment. We've sold a couple of police cars, we've sold some of Fran's surplus equipment, and that, that's where that money goes into that account.
And then what's miscellaneous revenue is?
As I mentioned before, that's the, the dog bite money that came back, that's the workers' comp audit from seventeen eighteen, that's the automobile insurance audit from seventeen eighteen, that goes into that miscellaneous revenue.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leom?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, next is the purchase of the Lexus Nexus program.
Yes, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to purchase the Lexus Nexus program for seventy-five hundred dollars, and to take the funds for this purchase from the police extra duty account.
Second.
Second.
As I said, that, that program is a, it's, it's a software program that provides all kinds of information, all kinds of databases, regional information, where crimes have taken place, gives the opportunity to all members of the department to analyze data, to find information, particularly the Detective Bureau, there's all kinds of public information in there. It's something that the, our future police chief uses on a daily basis, and feels very, very effective, and was part of his strategic plan when he applied to this town.
So is the seventy-five hundred dollars an annual fee, or is that just the initial fee, and then the annual fee becomes less going?
My understanding, that was the fee.
It's annual fee, I believe. Mechanically, we can't spend it out of the extra duty fund, we're gonna transfer money from the extra duty fund to the general fund, and pay it out of the police budget. So the motion's got, it's like a two-step, it's the, the funding source is actually the money that's in the extra duty fund, but we need to transfer that to the general fund to pay the bill. We're not gonna pay it out.
I thought it was seventy-five hundred, purchase and fifteen hundred dollar annual maintenance.
Okay, I was, I was told it was, I didn't know there was an additional.
Did you hear, Anthony?
I, I, no, I've been emailing Jimmy, back and forth, we'll have to back, connect it into their budget.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, but I, I was told at this point was immediate seventy-five hundred dollars.
Purchase, and then there's a maintenance.
Right, so, so, if it's an annual, so it's not in their budget, obviously, for this year, and they want to have it now, but we're going in, I mean, we still haven't finalized the budget, so are we going to have to add anything into their budget for next year? Because, is it another seventy-five hundred, or is it just a maintenance fee?
No, I think it's a fifteen, I think it's fifteen hundred.
It will have to be added.
Except for maybe three months, you know, if they do a purchase.
Anthony, what's, what's the extra duty fund? What is that fund?
When an officer does, let's say, a U I job, he gets paid, his expenses come out of the extra duty fund, then when we bill U I, the money goes back into that pot. Over time, it's accumulated some money, a few dollars here and there, that we've built up over many, many years. So we don't want to spend that.
Isn't the use of the car in there, and fuel and everything else, or?
No, the use of the car, the, the, when we bill up for the use of the car, it goes back to the police operating budget.
Okay.
Half of it goes to fuel account, half goes to the maintenance account.
So that shouldn't be a, a wash?
It should be a wash, yeah. It's, as I said, it's built, it's, they won, it's built up money, a couple thousand a year, so...
There was sixty-five hundred roughly, or sixty-five thousand?
There was at one point, and now, there was, as of today, there was eighteen, right.
So we haven't had this before?
No.
In the department?
No.
So what hurt, would it do to just run the normal course, and have it for July one, put it in the budget, and start July one? It's almost April.
I know.
I'm just asking the question. You need it for analyzing crime data and everything else.
Exactly. And, and this new police chief would like to be able to start using it when he comes up, hopefully comes on board on May first.
Get everything operational and running, to find out.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding.
There's all kinds of information that is used on a daily basis.
The, the term for the commencement of, of that contract, I believe it's around May first, so you're looking at a potential sixty-day gap, so, and I, you may have sort of, I don't know if there's training or certification where he's, it's gonna be, eat away some of that time also, so, I mean, just to take that in consideration, it's a sixty-day window, if you stay outside of your budget process, to have to fund for the balance of this fiscal year. After speaking to the police chair, Police Commission Chairman, I don't believe the commencement date's gonna be before May first, right, so...
Be May first.
Yeah.
From what I heard.
Yeah, that's, that's what I believe the contract was set for, yes. So you're looking at sixty days if you, if you delay, or sixty days to, to pay whatever that sixty-day window costs.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Roll call?
Could you make sure the motion just says we're paying it out of the police three-twenty account of the contractual, and then we'll transfer money, the appropriate amount, from the extra duty fund to general fund?
So do you, so do you want two motions, one to approve it, and one for the funding source?
Yeah.
So Marie's motion was to approve the purchase.
So we're voting on that.
And I would note that the Police Commission also voted on this purchase. And the second was made by?
Second was made by George.
George, okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leom?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that to fund the Lexus Nexus program, we are gonna take the money from the police overtime budget and put it into the...
No, no.
Oh, so the extra duty, sorry.
On two-twenty-two to fund one-oh-one.
Okay. The extra, the police extra duty two-twenty?
Two-twenty-one.
Two-two-two account, and go to the general, general fund account.
I will second that motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leom?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is citizen statements and petitions. Seeing none, move for...
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Before you adjourn, we had skipped over...
Yes, we'll go back to...
I will just quickly state for you, Connecticut General Statute seven dash one forty-eight W does provide disqualification of contractors for bidding on municipal contracts. It does provide a basis for disqualification based on the conviction or entry of a plea of guilty for the commission of a crime, but your ordinance must provide so. And I don't believe your ordinance does. So, therefore, based, since you do not have it within your local ordinance, I don't think it would be appropriate. So I think that language should be straight.
Okay, so...
So then we might as well just approve it.
Well, we can approve it, but we have to eliminate...
With the elimination of that highlighted language.
On, yes.
Yes.
Item nine, I believe it was, on eight. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve bid number one, two thousand and nineteen twenty, professional cleaning services, and to exclude the provision, the added provision of background check.
Second.
Yeah, I believe it's item eighteen on page four.
Okay.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Yeah, so, would, should we consider that somewhere in the future, in the ordinance, or not?
The statute gives you that authority, it's your decision if you want to have it. If you want to have it, so the answer is, should you?
I, I, I get it.
You can, I can say, yes, you can, or you have the authority to adopt it, whether or not you should is a business decision for you to make.
Is it common, or?
It's specific to a community, you know, so, I mean, if you want to have it, contact C C M and ask how many other communities have that specific language in their bidding ordinances, if you'd like, we'll provide that to you in the future.
Thanks.
Okay.
Roll call.
Did you get the motion?
Yes, it was, so we just did the, we just made the motion, and it was seconded, but then there was discussion, so we haven't voted yet. It's on item...
We did, we did...
It was on item eight C, the approval of the bid.
From the two-twenty-two, general fund account.
No, 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 this is up...
This is another motion.
This is up on item eight C.
The cleaning contract.
The cleaning contract, that's what we got back there.
So the motion was to approve it with, without the...
Item eighteen on page four.
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.